Okay, this meeting on October the 24th is now called to order. Lobby, could we ask you to please lead us in prayer?
Let's pray. Most Congress, as heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord, for all the many blessings of life that you have bestowed. God has spread your peace to each and every one of these commissioners, Lord, as they do the task in which they've been elected to do and to serve this county to the best of their abilities. God, we just thank you for all things. In the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen I pray. Amen.
Chairman, would you lead us in closing statements?
I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Craig Brooks?
Here.
Debbie Davis?
Here.
Daniel Deal?
Here.
Dewey Eskenot?
Here.
Mark Evans?
Here.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Here.
John Pipinger?
Here.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
And James Witty?
Yes.
Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Make a motion to approve on approved minutes.
Right.
Approval by John, second by, who was that?
Grant.
Grant. Roll call.
Craig Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
And James Witty?
Yes.
Approval of reports of offices.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Approval by John, second by Samantha. Roll call.
Craig Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
And James Witty?
Yes.
We have two notaries. First one is Ella Pearl Parker of, let's see, she is of Benton. Employer is Richard Banks. Second, we need to do them one at a time?
No, you can do them all together.
Okay.
If you worry them all out.
Okay. Second one is Tammy Wire of Murphy, North Carolina, employer of Peoples Bank of Duck Town. Those are the two.
Make a motion to approve the notice.
Motion by John, second by?
Mark.
Yes, Mark.
Second by Mark. Roll call.
Craig Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
And James Witty?
Yes.
Okay, budget amendments. Now, we're gonna do these one by one, Catrice?
You can read them all. You can read all of them out.
Okay.
And then put one of them out once. One, two, three. Three, seven?
One, two, three.
Seven, you hand it out tonight.
Okay, Board of Education Amendment Number One.
Now, they're separate. They're, they are separate.
You did vote on their separate.
Okay. So, so we, so this one here, then, we need to vote on accept?
Yeah, I didn't realize there was any from Board of Education in here.
Okay, so. That's the only one from the Board of Education? Okay. So, Board of Education Amendment. Following monies or grants that are flow, these are flow-through monies? And do I need to go through all of this?
You can read the total expenditure, just the total source and total expenditure. As long as they match, you should be good.
And what is that?
Mr. Chairman, do you care if I, will you entertain a motion on this? Will you take a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept Budget Amendment Number One from the Polk County Board of Education as presented. There's no, apparently it's completely flow-through according to their statement.
I second the motion. Okay, motion by Pipinger, second by Deal?
Yes.
Roll call.
We hadn't had no discussion.
Discussion?
This amendment is eleven pages long.
And they, and they were actually told before, it's been quite a while back, when we had amendments like this come through, to do us a caption page on the front with resolution number and the total.
I'm not seeing this either.
Total in and total out. So, you've not seen the deal?
No. I don't know why you did that to me. That's the deal with that one.
Well, now, I didn't, was it in or not? I didn't see them.
And then they brought me another one. That's what I handed out tonight as well, but it was always, it was already the same thing that they gave me the other day.
For what page?
Same, same pages.
So, there's no change on any of the numbers? They didn't redo it, find a mistake?
No, I'm not sure why they brought it to me. You should've had a copy in your packet and then that one I hand out's not exactly the same thing.
It's all flow-through grant money. For twelve years of being a commissioner, we had never been able to change anything on the schools anyway. They have their own thing.
That, that's correct.
It just probably calls all of it in. We do this every year. And if anybody wants a, a copy of it, it rolls up, I'll have it in the office. Or if you'll get with Mayor Catrice that you want, we, we'd be sure to get those out to anybody that we want.
And there's also always a copy of these in the county clerk's office.
Clerk's office.
But Daniel's right. When it's flow-through, there's nothing we can actually do, that's school boards.
Yep. So, we wanna. Bow down, Mr.?
Yeah, you got a motion, sir.
All right, roll call.
Craig Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
And James Witty?
Yes.
All right, and is this? Is this number, what's this? Is this number one?
We're all sorry to be late. Actually, we have this, we have seven, not three. There are some examples, thirty, thirty-eight, seventy-seven, and I just give you a without system. We don't have to read all of them, or?
We don't have to read all of these?
Just, yeah, we have it. You did the minutes.
Just, all right, so we've got the one through seven. One through seven, budget amendments. On the Polk County Budget Amendments, one through seven. Okay. So, I gotta read these? Okay. One is the other government grants, fifteen ninety. Senior senders and other supplies, fifteen ninety. Proposed source of funds, other supplies and materials, nine fifteen. Nine hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty cents. Proposed source of funds, reserve funds, ten thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. Eight supporting documents attached. This was Polk County Sheriff's Department. Can liners. Pliers. Delivered to the Sheriff's Department. Batteries. Road crew. Auto parts, Sheriff's Department. From NAPA, oil filters. Oil.
You don't really have to do it, except the, the man that I just said.
Okay.
Supporting documents, or just for, for our information.
Okay, then here's one big one. Might wanna read these. Kamisaki mower, eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And anyway, and then, one sixty-two. Forty-three eighty, thirty-eight ninety-nine. One thirty-five. And twenty thousand and fifteen thousand. Health Department programs. And fifteen thousand. And twelve thousand four hundred and fifty-nine. And nine thousand three hundred and sixty-nine. Three thousand and ninety. And six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and two cents.
There was one more for the three hundred library, district's flow-through grant money. I added it up, number seven, the last one.
No. Number seven, yes. Three hundred dollars library. What's this, number eight? Never? Okay.
Make a motion to approve Budget Amendments, one oh one, one through seven.
Motion made by Pipinger, second by, what was that? Jeremy. Any discussion?
Just one thing on number four. Uh, Miss, Miss Lo, the undesignated, seventy-nine thousand on the undesignated number four, that, that's gonna be a, a expenditure that it flows back into the fund balance, correct?
Yes, the twenty thousand we already have, and then that fifteen is a reimbursement grant, so we have to spend it out and then let it back.
And then it re-crees, okay.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Craig Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
Travel resolutions by Commissioner Brooks.
I think we're gonna tell you about one more, John Holt, that's been corresponding with Cherokee County, North Carolina.
And, and they did get back with him the other day, but they don't have the documentation ready to send or what you was looking for.
Yeah, Brooks, so. We're still waiting to get that back. And hopefully, Sheriff will be here by November meeting.
It, it should be.
Okay, Building and Grounds, County Executive?
We need to have a Buildings and Grounds committee meeting. We weren't able to really have one this month with fall break being scheduled for one week and then fire this week. So, with Commissioner Eskenot, I've asked him to look over calendar and let me know. And this will be Buildings and Grounds, don't, who does that one?
Hold on, so we got the committee?
Correct, I'm sorry, I thought.
You got the committee meeting, Tim?
Do what?
You got the committee meeting?
I've got the committee list here.
So, if you just let me know who I need to get in contact with on Buildings and Grounds, we just need to have?
Okay, I'll hand them out.
Okay, and we need to have it for two things. That's the show barn, and we need to meet at the show barn, and then as well, the sidewalk around the courthouse. So, just, if anybody wants to know on both of them.
Mr. County Executive, I've also had several complaints on the women's restroom in the basement of the courthouse, on some, some issues on the floor as well. We'd like to look at that.
We can take care of that one with our, the sidewalk.
Okay, and sanitation, County Executive?
Sanitation, the first, Madam Chairman, is the resolution that, that was presented to you earlier. That would be one of those with the Tennessee municipal bond fund, for us to go ahead and move forward with that. The other one would be Metal Branch, that is a resolution as well.
The first one is the one with solid waste equipment. Is that capital outlay? Is that the one he was talking about?
That would be another one as well. There should be two or three of them, John, that I had.
So, there's three.
Those are all coming forth from the sanitation committee. Those are resolutions, so let me go ahead and execute the note between Metal Branch, the note between Tennessee municipal bond fund, and as well, to further through with the capital outlay with the municipal bond fund, John, or did which one have those?
I've got the capital outlay, that's the one that they can make copies and hand it out there, but that's this seven pages long.
Yeah.
Tim made copies and handed out to everyone.
County Executive, on the, do you care if I ask on this?
Yeah.
On the, the one that's about eight pages long here, and there's a lot of reading, we, we all got copies here a while ago. This is the document you brought in earlier.
Yes, that is.
You brought it in, was not in the packet, but they made the copies.
Correct, it, it did not make it to the packet because that was with the Tennessee municipal bond fund. They're trying to get that turned around real quick, which I do apologize, I didn't have it in the packet, but it was what was brought forward from the committee meeting the last time, to have the percentage removed if there was a penalty and an early payoff, as well as the three hundred twenty-five thousand we borrowed from them. And if you see on there, where they, they've taken care of, of everything through the Tennessee municipal bond fund, and that is that resolution that you do have, John.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution of Polk County, Tennessee, authorizing the issuance of interest-bearing solid waste equipment capital outlay note, series twenty nineteen, and the amount not to exceed three hundred twenty-five thousand in providing for the payment of said note. The resolution ten one nineteen is accurate, as, as presented to the commission in full, with a copy to be left in County Executive and County Clerk's office for inspection.
Correct, yes.
So, that is my motion.
Motion, pray.
Well, that's, I say. Do you say?
Do you say? Do you say?
Yeah. I make a motion.
Do you say?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
I just wanna make sure, like I said, we, we just, we did receive this tonight, and copies have been given to all the commissioners. This exceeds nowhere any three hundred point five thousand, but does that include the processing fee of five hundred? Was that part of the three twenty-five?
No, it was not. That, that five hundred processing fee was added in on that, which, which is in that documentation.
So, so the note itself's not to exceed three point five, and then the other fees that apply, also authorized?
Okay. Roll call.
Craig Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
And James Witty?
Okay, surplus items from the library.
We still got?
Oh, we got one more resolution?
On sanitation.
Oh, on sanitation. Oh, I thought we done all three. Oh, God. Okay. Which one? This one? That was part of that one, okay. This one is the short one. Right?
If that's to let me on route to execute, or to go ahead and move forward and go into contract with Metal Branch, that'll be where we will be taking our ways to authorize that contract agreement between us and Metal Branch.
Okay, so this one, okay. A resolution approving solid waste disposal agreement between Environmental Trust Company and Polk County, Tennessee, authorizing the County Executive to execute the solid waste disposal agreement on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee. Whereas Universal Ways LLC will be disposing of all the solid waste it collects from the convenience centers located in Polk County at the Metal Branch landfills in Athens, Tennessee. Whereas Environmental Trust Company, owner of Metal Branch landfill, will be on Polk County directly for the county's solid waste disposed at Metal Branch landfill. Whereas the sanitation committee has reviewed the solid waste disposal agreement between Environmental Trust Company and Polk County, Tennessee, recommends that the agreement be approved by the Polk County County Commission. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the legislative body in session assembled, that the solid waste disposal agreement between Environmental Trust Company and Polk County, Tennessee, is approved and the County Executive is authorized to execute the solid waste disposal agreement on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee, be it further resolved, that the resolution take effect from and after its passage, the public welfare requiring it this day of, and so forth.
It's twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth day of October, two thousand nineteen.
Now, was it bound in that one?
No. No actual amount.
It was in, it was in on that, that came through the committee, is twenty-two dollars and twenty-four cents a tonne will be the tonnage bill rate for the county's trash, countywide. The only increase will be over the next five years, will be a CPI increase that will come forth, and that way, that's, that's what comes down the pike from a higher level than the?
I hadn't noticed it, not really, it really should've been in the resolution on that, because it blocks our amounts in.
I make a motion to approve Resolution ten two nineteen.
Second.
Motion made by John, second by?
Brooks.
Brooks. Any discussion? Roll call.
Craig Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
And James Witty?
Yes.
Last thing on sanitation, Madam Chairman. I just need the board's approval coming forth from the committee to enter into the final stages, I guess you'd say, of what's gonna be expected from our holler, to get those items negotiated down, our turnaround times on pickup, how well we expect our boxes to be before their call. The committee did approve that to go before the commission, for me to go ahead and finish this up, and I will bring it back to that committee in next month's meeting before the commission meets.
I make a motion to refer to County Executive, if you go into the logistics with the, the
I'm thinking that Mr. Evans asked to have a committee here to come back before the committee before we go into commission.
And to bring it back in front of the committee before the next commission meeting.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Pipinger, second by Dewey. Any discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
Surplus items from the library, County Executive.
The things that were passed out were like an inkjet printer in front of the library. If you all approve to disperse of those, I have a resolution that would grant me the authority to disperse of them as need be. Also on that resolution is the authority to get rid of the items that you all have already let me do for the community center which are piled up in a room. I fear so. The resolution that I just put forth before Ms. Davis is to let me move forward and get rid of their surplus if you so choose to have a marked the surplus material. Anything that's worth anything, we are going to auction off. So I mean, I want that to be clear. We're not just going to start throwing away things away. If there's stuff that's deemed usable, sellable, there will be a public auction where everybody can have an opportunity to get, but things that are parked forward, falling apart and trash are going to be all off for trash.
Just make sure there's no stuff involved.
Correct.
We've already approved the community center's surplus.
Surplus, yes, sir. But it's just to, it's just to perform that resolution that I have that authority to...
I make a motion, we declare this surplus property here for the library. I'll second it.
Motion by John, second by Dewey. Any discussion? Roll call. Do I need to read this resolution?
Well, now they've just done the, does the resolution contain the items?
No, it does not contain this.
That is a separate, separate.
There's list that's... The library items are on the resolution.
Oh, they are on the resolution.
It's attached to it, don't they?
Oh, okay. So you got library items, that's what they made a motion on.
Okay, so we're going to do a roll call now? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
Now, we need to read what we're selling for the resolution.
The resolution, the resolution.
Resolution. A resolution declaring the personal property identified in Exhibit A attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference located at the library as surplus property. Reaffirming the previous declaration of a certain personal property located at the senior center as surplus property, authorizing and directing the county executive to sell and dispose of said surplus property in any manner deemed appropriate by the county executive and authorized by law. Authorizing the county executive to perform all acts and sign any documents on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee, necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. Whereas it has been determined that the personal property identified in Exhibit A attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference located at the library and the personal property previously declared as surplus property located at the senior center are no longer needed for county purposes and should be sold as surplus property. Now therefore be resolved by this legislative body in session assembled. The personal property identified in Exhibit A attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference located at the library is declared as surplus property. The declaration of certain personal property previously declared as surplus property is reaffirmed. The county executive is authorized and directed to sell and dispose of all said surplus property in any manner deemed appropriate by the county executive and authorized by law. The county executive is authorized to perform all acts and sign any documents on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee, necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. Be it further resolved that the resolution take effect from and after its passage, the public welfare requiring that this 24th day of October 2019.
Motion to approve resolution 10-3 of 19 with the addition that the powers granted to the county executive move forward from this point on that's in the resolution. I think one of the reasons you've done this, Robbie, was you wanted to clarify the wishes of the county commission to your office on getting rid of the property, is that correct?
Correct.
We discussed that a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
So as far as I'm concerned, we don't have to put it in everything. We still have to approve the property as being deemed unusable, but once we do it, you shouldn't have to put that in ever, ever.
That is correct. What John's saying is that once you all deem it surplus, we won't have to do this. You're giving me the authority to go ahead and have a public sale for those things that are sellable, but trash is trash and we'll clean it up and go on.
So that is a motion on 10-3 of 19.
So I have a second. Motion by Pipinger, second by Jeremy. Any discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
City of Benton County Executive.
Yes, ma'am. I'm not saying it made it into your packets. We received a second notice for a deep well pump at the wastewater treatment plant in City of Benton requesting a payment of $5,000 for this pump. Says replacement pump was necessary due to a failure of the sewer system at the Justice Center because the system's grinder pump was known to not be working for an extended period. I've talked with Sheriff Ross. That repair has been done. They're also making sure to have a backup on IRAM. It's just a pleasure to this commission because it is the $5,000 amount. If you want to pay for the pump for the City of Benton or how will you want to handle it moving forward?
What's your recommendation?
I recommend none. Simply because was there a problem with that? Yes, but also you've got to look at everybody else's sewer that came into the gravity system of Benton. We, if I'm not mistaken, don't hold me to it, but I'm hoping to think that repair was right at $13,000 for the muncher and to have that one rebuilt. I know Sheriff Ross not here, so that came through from his side of it. He says that, that we're being told we're still experiencing some problems, but our equipment is working properly at the jail now. But it's up to you as this commission to go forward.
The problem is they did do some collection and took some pictures. What was stopped in the pump up was from commissary was a pump.
The pictures that I have are from final process. It's not from the pump itself.
I had seen some before.
That's from the RAS, that's from the RAS system. And that's after that clarification. And that's the actual RAS pump. It's not the deep well pump. And then this is on top of the clarifiers at the weirs. There are commissary items, there are also personal hygiene items and... Only picture.
Here's here somewhere.
I'm here.
Here's here. We've got a city commissioner here.
So? I wasn't notified that this was going to be at the meeting. So I didn't really come to the party, if that's what you're asking.
I said Sheriff Ross received the second notice.
There wasn't the right picture was seen, I know that.
I said this is what was received in the mouth.
That picture I got, if y'all know what you're looking for, you can't even tell on my phone.
Well, I think it's kind of a, it's kind of a combination issue, there's no doubt.
Right.
I think the, the jail was it fault, there's no doubt. They let it go a little far before the issue was corrected.
It was about two months at most, according to the sheriff.
Yeah. It, you know, that, that was, and then, you know, and then I think the city, they don't have a big enough issue, big enough system to handle what's coming through.
I think we're supposed to have the system, but it is old, I mean.
Yeah, yeah. So it's just kind of a... Put it here and put it down.
I mean, it was working, you know?
Yeah.
You can't, you can't put stuff like that down it. You do it at your house.
Yeah, right.
You're going to end up paying for the system.
Yeah.
It's a bad situation, however.
Yeah, it is.
I know evidently, I don't know, Robbie probably knows more about it now, but...
Yeah, I ain't no...
They always have coming through down. It's Raymond noodles and commissary docks, well, you know.
Still now.
Yeah, I got the picture of it. Already floating on top. We keep my dent, we got enough holes to pop it out.
I do know about that.
Riding around, if anybody wants to look at it.
And I do know about that. I run that facility for seven years, so go ahead.
Well, that facility run down, I can tell you that. It's...
It was built in...
It was in the 1950s. Five thousand dollars.
Well, there should be commissary coming through or now, the sheriff just took action to stop that.
There should be. Picture I've got, Raymond noodles and commissary docks and it stuck just, whenever they mentioned again, I told Tanner to go over and look if that pump is working. I never did hear back, Becky. Calhoun said it was. So either it is or it's not big enough to handle what is going on. I don't know, so I reckon we're going to end up right now. Got a game cam down one of the manholes that'll snap pictures every so often and see what's coming from the jail. Some of the other option we got.
I talked to the sheriff as far as we got somebody there that you can build a trap that could set downstream from that, from the jail. I know and everybody's kind of agreeing and I've done that eight years whenever I was at Clean Utilities. But like I said, as far as right now, everything's supposed to be right on our side. It's supposed to be, like Gary said, it's supposed to be.
Supposed to be, but...
Yeah.
I mean, you still get the same wrong, you know, fact, according to power.
Like I said... And there is...
It's coming through somehow, I don't know how.
You can see packages, but you can also see feminine hygiene products in this paper. I mean...
Are we assuming that that didn't, are we assuming that that didn't come from the jail?
So we can't determine all that just happened?
Feminine hygiene products don't come from the jail too, though. I mean...
Correct.
I mean, yeah, I mean, hell, no cross, exactly. I mean, I'm just saying, they can come from anywhere, everywhere.
They can.
Well, no, I mean, you can't speak for everybody on the big city commission, but she's got a good idea and you think we could come back next month after y'all have a meeting and see if we compromise on $2,500?
Because you can't determine it was all us.
I think that's...
I doubt it, I mean, that's all I can do, huh?
Because I think we're all in agreement, it's partly our fault, I think we're in agreement.
Would you, would you all as a commission grant me the authority and I'll go to the big commission maybe, or big commission and I'll, I don't care if that's...
We're not trying to be hard, don't get, don't get us wrong, but you know, $5,000 stopped or...
I make a motion to authorize county executive to negotiate up to 50% of the request. Is that, was that what you just want, 50%?
If that's what y'all need.
Because I mean, we, I mean, there's commissary docks, I mean, can't really get all that.
There's no doubt that, that the stuff was in there to help destroy it. There's no warrant there.
But half of it may not be ours.
Yeah.
May not be.
Well, the fact about it is, you know, also you can look at it, those prisoners are not all county prisoners. They're city prisoners also.
Correct. Once they go to that jail, they're county prisoners.
Well, yeah, but they can live in the city and they go...
Sure they can live in the city.
And they're sent to the county jail. So I mean...
I ain't living in the county jail, you go to the jail, that's what I do.
So it's, it's kind of like, you know, the city don't have a jail. So, you know, we got a house, you know, the county has the house.
So we got state prisoners there too.
Right. So, you know, it's just, yeah, I mean, it's an open matter.
You can have one, I mean, we don't want to...
Well, exactly.
I make one.
I second motion.
All right, motion made by Pipinger, second by Woody. Any discussion?
I'd like to ask, as a city, how discuss anything about how much they're going to pay on the open tops that they use?
Now we're waiting for you to make this aim.
Y'all were supposed to give back to us?
I got back with Rob.
We don't, we have not, we not...
We couldn't, we couldn't finalize it, so... Yeah, I mean, what Robbie said, I agree with it. I had a chance to have saw the paperwork, you know what I mean? When I get the contract, when Robbie presents it as mayor, then I don't have a problem. I can't, I can't speak for the other two, but I mean, as far as, as far as, because I told Robbie, I did what I could to get the contract.
Haven't spoken for November 17.
For the people who are here now, are with our unit. Correct, but it'd still be, well, it would still be, since they're going to go into that, it's still, what I'm looking at is still to get something, you know, provided for the cost, since, you know... Even though it's going to be built in such a way to hold that, considering... And everybody, just to see...
Well, not commissary.
Correct. So that way, with the fabrication of those, of the chute. So they can still be overdone and do so.
Like you want to try and cheat up, not us cheating either. Huh? We're going to get back to where you're at. You're one time slicer, five to high already, dude.
I don't worry.
All right, we'll work for you. We've got to work.
That was...
I do, I do.
I'd say slice it all.
I just don't like to be called cheat, you know? I do have problems with that.
Okay, where we at? That was discussion, roll call.
I'd like to say...
We... No, okay. Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot?
No.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
Hospital equipment. Hospital equipment, County Executive.
The equipment that is in the hospital right now, I, as well as Doug with the City Duck Town, we have been approached by an individual that would like to, or a company that would like to come in and not only make a price on the equipment, but also to, for you all to grant me the authority, I guess you'd say, to have the power turned on, to check the equipment. The equipment is there, there's a lot of different equipment inside the hospital, and I'm very well aware of that. Different people have said, as far as getting rid of it, to, to do it this way, to do a sale here, to do this. This is a one person, one company, Lifeline Biomedics that, that wants to come in, and the county attorney has said that we would probably need to turn it out in an RFP form, just so everybody has that opportunity of will write it, so it's not just, so it's not just for one person. But what you need to realize is, is that equipment, it's sitting there, and it does belong to the county and the Duck Town. It is a way to recoup some of the money that's been put out. So, what we're asking is, is to be able to move forward in that. I have a resolution here that would authorize myself, as well as the mayor of Duck Town, and whoever the mayor of Duck Town would be, it's between County Executive and the mayor, to move forward at the best, most feasible way that we see fit to disperse this equipment that isn't within the hospital. Also, there's some things in there that we could use, chairs, tables, those things like that, because there's some, if you go through the community center especially, that we could reuse some of this stuff, and for myself and for Duck Town to, to go through and pick maybe some of the tables or some of the chairs that we feel that we can use. But this is to move forward, and it's resolution to move the equipment that's there at the hospital. It's resolution format? Can we read it, Doug, please?
Yeah.
Resolution authorizes the County Executive and the mayor of Duck Town to retain on behalf of their prospective local government, based on the local government percentage of ownership, any personal property located in the hospital deemed by them be unusable by their prospective local government, relocating it to the appropriate office within the city or the county, authorizing the directing the County Executive to self-dispose on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee, all the remaining surplus property located in the hospital, by any manner deemed appropriate by the County Executive and authorized by law, and number three, authorizing the County Executive to perform all acts, sign any documents on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee, necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution, whereas Polk County, Tennessee owns an undivided three-fourth interest, the City of Duck Town owns an undivided one-fourth interest of the personal property located in the hospital, whereas the prior Polk County Commission previously declared the personal property located in the hospital as surplus property. Whereas some of the personal properties, such as office equipment, office furniture, office supplies located in the hospital may be used by one of the county's offices or by the city, whereas Polk County Commission has determined that is the best interest of the county, to proceed with selling the remaining surplus personal property, locate the hospital that is not usable by the county and the city. Now therefore, be it resolved in this legislative body ensemble, the County Executive and the mayor of Duck Town are authorized to retain on behalf of their prospective local governments, based on the local government's percentage ownership, any personal property located in the hospital deemed by them unusable by their prospective local governments, and relocate the appropriate office to the county and/or the city. The County Executive is authorized to direct self-dispose on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee, all remaining surplus property located in the hospital by any manner deemed appropriate by the County Executive and authorized by law. The County Executive is authorized to perform all acts, sign any documents on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee, necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. Be it further resolved, let this resolution take effect from after this day of the passage of public welfare during this twenty-fourth day of October, two thousand and ten. Motion to approve Resolution ten four nine ten.
Thank you. I don't know. Brooks, Commissioner Brooks. Are you gonna set a time limit on any county or city offices, being able to get stuff?
I'll get with them, as far as on the, on the county side, you know, we'll see if any of that material there, you know, that they might need. Because we'll, we'll have to put it up to an RFP form and see if anybody else outside of this one company, you know, would want to come in. Also, we're gonna have to get with Tri-State and have the power turned on, because they wanna see if the equipment will fire up.
Right, I understand that, but I meant, I don't see them dragged out, county come in and picking up stuff. Give them a certain length of time to get it, if they want it.
Yeah, it'll be done underneath.
And then after that, everything goes.
Oh, yeah, it, it's not gonna, but it'll take a little while through the RFP process to get that.
I know, but the county offices or the city offices, they could go ahead and get their stuff, if they want anything. Is that not right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, them get their part out within a given time, and then you know that everything else goes.
And a lot of that stuff, as far as the office stuff, these companies are not really looking at the office thing, they're looking at the bigger equipment.
Yeah, he's, he's also already, he's got a price, he's got a price to add on all, all that stuff. What we're waiting on that medical, we want to see the CTE scan and all that stuff, make sure it works. If it works, it's more money, if it don't, it just parts, so that'll knock the price on it, but I think they've already got a price from what he told me last time, but, but I'm thinking for that, our, our next city meets, number seven, if you guys pass this, then we'll have to get them, so I figure between now and then, because he's got a pretty good idea, though, but we're not gonna break the place, because there's not a whole lot, but I just know, for a city, we don't need much. There's some chairs over there that we could probably use, maybe a table too, but I, I mean, really, we don't, we don't have a lot. You know, there's a lot of different offices here in the county, so.
I don't know, I think the approval would be you.
Well, I know it's... Well, I swear, the things you say, I don't have any, well, you open the door, let every office come flying in, and start carrying stuff, oh, there has to be.
I'm sure that, paying like all that, trading teams, bed and fire, but, but just in case somebody, if we have something unusual, you know, it probably would be a problem, just in case it blew.
The biggest thing's gonna be like chairs, you know.
Just obviously, well, yeah.
Yeah, that can be items that could actually be used at the courthouse, or at the city hall, or...
Right. Most of the computers, what pilot, or I think most of that stuff's, I mean, not used for us, but I think they, they recycle a lot of stuff, so, I mean, they, this company, and there may be a few others that I know of, so we're not gonna get the door beat down with offers, so they can recycle, that's what they look, that's what they do. Most of the stuff they sell at the hospital beds, a lot of that equipment will go to third world countries. We think it's, it is nice for some other, and that's what they, that's how they sort of deal with it, basically, we're... I guess when we decide that we need, because somebody needs something, maybe just, because to them, I don't have a problem with it coming up or something, so we all know what we, what we're doing, but, but yeah, just like, we just can't open the door and just let everybody come flying in that way, but it's actually pretty good shape right now, so we don't really go and surge it too much.
So, what's, what's your approval for this resolution, you gonna do RFP and all, and they move the mayor's forward, right? There we go.
Now, I know that if you guys, I'm sure Robbie does too, so if any staff wanna call the guy's name, Terry Payne, talk to him if you get any concerns about what they're interested in, what they want to say, I mean, that'd be great. Anyway, you just take my word of Robbie for it.
I say everybody, you suck the problem.
Well, what I would ask would be, you ask each office, is that a new printer, or a chair, or something?
We start making lists the way they do. For office stuff. One more question, this is, because the county gets seventy-five cents, fifty, seventy-two cents.
If anybody wants to go through, usually, would you take anybody on the commission to go through, send it to you, see for yourself?
Okay, roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Do you yes or not?
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Okay, purchase new vests, County Executive.
It's in your packet, this is for the new vests for the Sheriff's Department. This is a fifty-fifty grant that comes back through. They give you three different prices, you look at it, everything is on a fifty-fifty. The ones that I have talked to, they do like the one that is a little more expensive, and you would, you would say wine, wine, wine vests, lots of vests that they're using are, they're, they're beyond their life expectancy, and so this is a very important piece of personal protective equipment for Sheriff's Department, but it's whichever one of those that you, as a commission, would approve, just do remember that it's, it is a fifty-fifty, so even with going with the more expensive that they do like, you're only fifty percent of that.
I'm assuming they like the Safari Land by GTs, is that correct?
Pardon, John?
They have the Safari Land by GT.
Yes, sir.
And they've also got Point Blank and Gals in the pack of model.
Yes, sir. The Safari Land one that you're looking at is eighteen thousand three hundred and forty.
These are level two or two A?
Two.
These are level two. Gary, what, what level's the city using now, are they, are they two? I don't know right now, last night I had like a three A, I don't know, it's a hit, I think it was a good one. They're heavy. I'm trying to find the one, which one was the one from GTs, Robert?
Pardon?
County Executive, the last one. And my understanding, GTs will come out and fit them, correct?
That's...
I mean, they, they'll come out and actually fit them in the vest, or certified to fit the officer, not just guesswork. That's worth a bunch.
How long do these things, what's, what's the warranty on them, I mean, what, do they, how, do they go bad?
Used to be five years. I was gonna say, it's a five year, and currently, we do have dead beef that are past that.
Now, our part is eighteen, or half of that, on this back page?
It'd be, it should be half. Be half, it's nine thousand ninety-one eighty-seven sixty-three.
Well, ninety-one, that is part of that, ninety-one eighty-seven sixty-three is how much we were awarded. Hundred dollars difference, yeah.
And this, this will come out of Sheriff's budget, right? No, this will be out of, this will be out of undesigned, I'm sure. They gotta get it in the budget, they can take it out of supplies and things. And they think, they gotta, they, they should take it out of their budget.
They, in the past, they, they said in the past, the county has always gave them the half of this, so I did make a note that if y'all approved this, we'll plan an amendment to move that money over, but...
It's always been out of, done out of County General in the past, but have they got that much extra money in this year's budget?
I mean, they might have money right there, right now, they've not spent yet, but they're planning.
I'm talking about looking at, at the year's budget, if they got that much more than last, see, they didn't have this expenditure last year. They've not got any more, they've got nine thousand more dollars in a line for, for equipment.
I mean, we took money away from that, but I don't have it.
They had eighteen or twenty thousand dollars in supplies.
That they use every year.
Yeah. Yeah, that's... It's in there now.
Half of it on this, and they'll be asking for more later, I'm sure.
See, we're, we're doing, oh, forty-some thousand dollars later this year, to, out undesigned, for...
Oh, for the lock, really?
The lines that they've got in there now, most of them are less than what, we, we cut a bunch of their lines. Now, the equipment line, I don't know, I don't know if we cut any, but I don't think we added anything to their equipment safety line. So, if we knock nine thousand or so out of that on the front end, I mean, they're, they're just gonna have to be back here for budget amendments back then. You say they can do it now, or do it June? You do it now, or you have to do it two or three, four times, do different budget amendments, move the money back in. If they get the vest, we're not gonna get out of that nine thousand extra dollars out of fund, I guess. But you're dealing with safety equipment, and, and am I correct, the safety equipment line would be the one that this would come out of, to come out of the line?
I don't think it's a law enforcement supply line.
I just feel like we should go ahead and do it, I mean, we pay for grants for buildings, and this is, this guy's lot.
And we have always paid.
If they get shot at, it's gonna get through it, so I don't even know why we're even...
I make the motion to approve the GT distribution. I'll second that.
Motion made by Hugh, second by Pipinger, roll call, any more discussion?
That is for the Safari Land, correct, Hugh?
Yes, sir.
Roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Do you yes or not?
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton, yes. James Woody.
Yes.
John, the win rate of the minute, so I...
You'll have to, yeah, you'll have to have a budget, man.
Do we do it, do we do it now, or do we need to wait?
You have a line?
But last time I did that, you knew it was in the roll call.
You have the number?
The beta, it's, it's in, yeah, number eight.
No, 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 you have the line number.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we're good. Still all good, yeah. You'll get some, I'll be back.
Fixed assets to amendments, County Executive?
The fixed asset is policies and procedures, it's to be able to disperse out the equipment which we're fixing to go into, and you all have that, it lays about the different, different things that are there, so the thought is, is to approve this, and we go forward to taking our own turn.
Second to the floor, too.
And the needs, the money's gonna come in.
That's tricky.
That's what I need to know.
Yes, sir.
It's on... I, I think that that's a grant.
No, sir, I'm making a motion to our, uh, we kind of died up with that right now.
Right. Motion made by you, second by... Jeremy, any more discussion? Roll call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot.
Yes.
Mark Evans. Jeremy Kinsey. John Pippenjer.
Yes.
Samantha Tranca.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Yes.
Okay, hunting regulations, commissioner Brooks.
Um, that's a, something, I just like start talking about that. John Holt, he's part, part two of our legal team, gonna start researching Eric May. It's starting to be a real problem, uh, I've had it happen, Debbie's had it happen, Daniel just had it happen. People that, here on the weekend stuff, during the hunting season, are taking it upon themselves just to pick up people's hunting dogs and leave with them. They think they're doing, well, some of them think they're doing a favor, and I think that's what happened to Daniel, they just being vengeful because they can't die hunting. And they still got his dog, they just kept laying things, but, but I had one wound up in my ass a bit. I think he was wound up in the middle of it, and we, uh, I know it's a bad time, a bad comparison, severe candy had done this several months back. And it's like private act, it's just a lot of other things, just simple theft. If we start looking in the back, trying to come up some kind of resolution, it makes a lot, it's difficult to defend them, you know, you... Well, I would say it's hunting dogs, I think Debbie's got kidnapped once, they wasn't named hunting dogs, and took them honestly.
Yep.
But mainly it happened...
Sheriff had to get mine back.
With hunting dogs. Uh, if we just look into what they're doing, what I have done, and just start seeing what we could do, we can change. But right now, it's just misdemeanor theft at the most, and, but there is some kind of, another step on the brakes, which is happening. And I'll be on next month's June, I saw a break last week, that time, tough job, much.
What do you want from the, like, animal kidnapping type deal, Brooke?
Well, that's a funny way of putting it.
Well, I mean, I don't know how to put it.
Animal kidnapping, yep, I'm for it.
It sounds funny, really, yeah, something, and severe candy, and I thought maybe blunt, and, and Copper Candy's done it before too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and put a stewardess, you know, let the fines and chores, uh, we can, I know one lady in, uh, I believe, Lady Green Candy, and her big dog, Big Candy, she just wound up charging a family, and it... But I used to say it's discretion, I don't, you don't want somebody in trying to hate, but it's very intense, like, uh, with that in the case, that lady called us...
As soon as she found that out, I'm admiring her, she, she took, uh, took one there, took one out, was standing there, and did not tell me that.
See, she called him first time, said, I got your dog, when he was, she made arrangements to meet her, and then she called back. She said, by the way, what, what hunting season is it? And he told us barren hog season, and she hung us on, and he's not heard from since, oh, it's that one, and, uh...
Well, one thing about that now, when you start, I mean, we're sitting here at North Carolina and Georgia, we have a lot of hunters here that come into the county, bear, boar, cone, everything else. You start stealing the dogs, and they can't keep up with any trouble, and they take a lot of money.
Mm-hmm. And two, you know, it needs to have language in it, it's a solid discretion of the dog owner, because somebody might have the best intentions, you know, just make mistakes, but they are people. But they handled that way last week, and, uh, I think they got you, Debbie, they stole you, didn't they?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they acted like I was a criminal.
I bet that didn't go far.
Oh, it didn't go good at all.
They told us it had fleas.
Yeah, they told us, and, and they've been gone for two months, and after they stole it, told me it had fleas, and, uh...
They ran home.
Well, that didn't go over good.
I mean, I know it's funny, this year's, they, they, it's not nothing, twenty-five hundred dollars, and I don't mind, you know, somebody just...
Yeah.
Just just...
Yeah, and I mean, you know, it, uh, you know, half the time, it's, it's, uh...
Well, you should have told them, give them flea bag, boy, they have it.
Yeah, yeah, it, well, Bill Davis had to come, I mean, he, he, he had to get ugly with the, with the, with the woman. He told her, he said, hey, I know these people, and he said, I also have blue healers, and he said, I know what a blue healer, you know, he said, they're, they, you know, he said, they, they mean the world to, to you, he said, uh, they save you life, and he said, uh, anyway, he, he, he threatened her. So, uh, anyway, so, yeah.
And basically, the problem here, it's not somebody truly thanks for being a good Samaritan, it's the anti-hunters, it's an intentional act, you know, they've got an agenda when they do it, and something.
They had one of those happen in Fanning County, a month ago. They're fixing to die those folks, Mr. Andrew Coolie, you're a felon, because that dog was struggling having medicine, they're gonna take him the dollar, the dog was denied his meds, so they're fixing to push it forward.
My counsel, sir, if I'm, I found a tracking collar on a road, and they could get off and do it all, but luckily, these are about ten dollars, because I found a GPS.
That's nothing, a lot of people don't know, they think those tracking collars are shock collars, and they're not, and they think they're doing it all, but I tell you, each time, they go pick the tracking collar through the woods, but luckily, they do think they're shock collars, and they don't like to kill the collars, they can always find them. I mean, they do murder, too, it's gonna bite, but the owner...
They try to take shock collar off, huh?
Yeah, and hurt. But it is a issue, it happens, fleas once or twice, we got four, so, thank you. Just start looking into it, see what they've done. That's, that's all for me for this month, I mean, unless he might just go to...
Mr. Chairman, we, we have one more item on budget amendments, if you have here.
Yeah.
I've got a budget amendment here, and it does, it goes back to the resolution on the vest that we, we had just a minute ago, and, and our budget director, you're okay with this budget amendment? Go ahead and read it out, there'll be a printed out copy in her office in the morning. This budget amendment number, yeah, before that, budget amendment number eight, and it's an amendment to provide safety equipment to law enforcement officers in the sheriff's office, uh, and then I've got employees for some reason. The total amount, the expenditure is eighteen thousand three hundred forty, and that's from one oh one thirty-nine thousand. Proposed source of expenditure will be eighteen thousand three forty, and it's five four one one four three one, is that right?
Five four one one zero.
Five four one one zero, four three one, that's the expenditure. That's eighteen thousand three forty.
That's the full amount.
That's the full amount.
Make the motion to approve, say it.
Motion made by you, second by Morgan. Any discussion? Roll call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippenjer.
Yes.
Samantha Tranca.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I, we need to suspend the rules if we, if we can, uh, we got one thing here. Uh, I'll let Robbie explain to you a little bit about that, Dave.
It's real quick, North Georgia Physical Therapy has been sold out or bought out from PT Solutions of Alabama. They're wanting to enter into a lease agreement into the building occupied. I have their lease agreement, and the reason why this is quick, because they want to move real quick, and they're trying to get everything closed by the first of this month, by November one. So I do have a resolution already drawn up, it's the same, same lease agreement, it's just the days will be changed from November first, twenty nineteen, for the four years and eleven months going forward. They're willing to put the security deposit down and enter into the lease agreement, just like you all have approved. So it's the same lease agreement, it's just I need you all to approve a resolution, so I can enter into this lease agreement, or the county can enter into this lease agreement with the new leasing.
Make the motion, suspend the rules, take care of this new lease agreement. Set the motion.
Stand.
Daniel, stand.
Motion by Brooks, second by Daniel. Any discussion? I need to read this.
Uh, you need to take roll call.
Roll call on the suspension. On the suspension.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippenjer.
Yes.
Samantha Tranca.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Yes.
That's a resolution, I'm sure, so...
A resolution approving the commercial lease agreement for a unit of the medical park at Copper Basin Medical Center between Polk County, Tennessee, City of Ducktown, Tennessee, landlord and PT Solutions Holding LLC, PT Solutions Physical Therapy tenant. Authorizing the county executive to execute the commercial lease agreement on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee, authorizing the county executive to execute and provide the above nine tenants and the written consent on the approval on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee, on matters set out for the commercial lease agreements that require written consent on approval from Polk County, Tennessee. Whereas North Georgia Physical Therapy Associates Incorporated has been occupying Unit A of Medical Park at Copper Basin Medical Center. Whereas PT Solution Holdings LLC, Alabama Limited Liability Company, PT Solutions Physical Therapy has acquired North Georgia Physical Therapy Associates Incorporated. Whereas PT Solutions Holding LLC, an Alabama Limited Liability Company, PT Solutions Physical Therapy would like to lease Unit A of the Medical Park at Copper Basin Medical Center. Now therefore be resolved by the legislative body in session assembled, that the commercial lease agreement with PT Solution Holding LLC, Alabama Limited Liability Company, PT Solutions Physical Therapy for Unit A of the Medical Park at Copper Basin Medical Center is approved. The county executive is authorized to execute the commercial lease agreement on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee, and the county executive is authorized to execute and provide the above nine tenants with a written consent or approval on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee, on matters set out in the commercial lease agreements that require written consent or approval from Polk County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved as the resolution take effect from and after its passage, public welfare requiring it this twenty-fourth day of October, two thousand nineteen.
Motion to accept resolution ten five with Matthew.
Second. Motion by Pippenjer, second by Samantha. Any discussion? Roll call.
Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippenjer.
Yes.
Samantha Tranca.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Yes. Yes.
Any announcements, statements?
Polk County, uh, Veterinary Health Day is this Saturday at ten to four, and if there's gonna be any change in that, it'll be known at six o'clock Friday evening, but, uh, there'll be a lot of free stuff for the kids.
One other thing I'd like to congratulate, Ducktown Copper Basin Utility District on its five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar CDGV water grant, uh, they got approved for that. That'll be for some water line improvements up Main Street to the water tank. See, you've been, been here as well, congratulations on your old CDGV water grant that you got whenever I first came into office, that'll be a part of that. The Copper Basin Utility District and Ducktown will be in the paper coming up, but looking forward to this and see those things done, once we get done with ours, and Debbie alluded the other day with the water line extension out through Lenzdale, we'll be getting a little more and doing some more with the county. Congratulations to City Benton and Ducktown for the last two years.
Yeah, and if I can, before we come, can I just go through this, we're doing a hospital. Can I go, I give, post everybody, hold these little sheets here, basically, what Debbie told me, then renew the license, I know you got the hospital not doing the licenses, but what we do, October, you have to go ahead and turn your stuff in, so if this, if you look at this letter, we actually got our license extended till October, there's no pay on the license till Au- April first, but... And just keep a certificate of need, and that's, that's about a part of our plan, so we stick, we definitely, when it comes through, they've got we listed, they're soon time administrator, so that shows how good we are, right? So when I got that, just dealing with it through the years, I know they're reporting this, so we went ahead and done it, but there's no money involved, they just, and they've granted that for us. So you guys, when you look through that, this, this sort of letter down went up, I guess it was October the third, and met with them and everything went through, then on the statute page back there, just, that's sort of just, I got a little thing there for, I guess, being questioned, I mean, Robbie had talked about it, but the hospital, it's what, basically, it's costing us every day, so anything we can do to, to get that. If you look on the bottom, it shows forty-two thousand, that was before we actually done engineering and all that, that roof that we had to send back, so we just started eating that money. And back there on the back part, I know you sort of put me over, doing the shredding, medical records, getting that, there's a list of them there, and the thing with that group number, you probably sort of gonna throw you for a loop, because most of that was paid for out of that special account, and we had set aside when monies was coming in, that money is sort of going down, so now, the state is paying most, most of the time for the girls working in the shredding, and then the county's reimbursements. So that's what's gonna throw you off, if you looked at reimbursement money, I think we're pretty much up, I think we done it, you know, the shredding today, so, and I guess, you guys paid Dwayne, and then we reimbursed twenty-five percent, then vice versa, but we've done work pretty well on that, but that was just all that was, just wanted to get sort of an update on more at the shredding. And with the records, and if anybody's got any need, or got any records over, just let us know, because we're trying to figure out how to do that. The only biggest problem we've got right now, not a problem, we're just trying to get everything cleared out, but we've got x-rays out at the zoo, and there's two companies that will buy those, and basically, I think, the recycling, get the silver out of them, so whatever money comes out of that, they just sort of, I'm not sure, one group wants to proceed, the other one just comes in and buys it all, so, and there's a lot of it. And what we're signing going through them is, there's information sheets, so they're having to go through each one and pull out the paper to be shredded and put them, so, but we've had four girls or ladies working over ourselves made, and, and what was it we figured there, it was like thirty-one thousand dollars to come in and do it, and they work around twenty-one thousand a second. But we have saved a little money rather than doing that, and it's, yeah, it's a lot of work, it's, it's a lot of junk over there, but they, they're girls, they worked hard, they're just working Saturday, so, but anyway, just sort of a little update to let you know where we're at on that, hopefully we'll clear that up here, shortly, the first year, and get everything sent to Nashville, and then if you need a medical, you have to request it from Nashville. But that's all, I won't hold you guys up, just point you, huh? Look through that, sort of, my numbers on the bottom of all those sheets, if you need anything, if you got any questions, you know, just feel free to call me.